All right, good evening. The time is seven oh one here at the Dyton zoning board of appeals public hearings, regular meetings, Tuesday, March twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty four, here at the Old Town Hall, one 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 Somerset Ave, Dyton, Mass. Uh, there is, this meeting is being recorded for, in art, video and art recorder for cable broadcast, um, is also on Zoom tonight. So as a disclosure, we do have our zoning board attorney, Margaret Mitchell, who will be attending via Zoom, as well as one of our voting members, uh, Jonathan Gale, also on Zoom. So as a reminder, our votes today have to be by roll call for that reason, because we have, uh, voting members who will be on Zoom, or potential voting members on Zoom. Uh, the link for the Zoom meeting is posted on the agenda. The meeting ID is eight one four, seven two, eight nine, eight seven four three, passcode is four, sorry, passcode is three four, eight six nine four, dialing my phone, six four six five five eight eight six five six. And this is a revised agenda. The original meeting was posted on February twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty four, uh, at one twenty nine PM, and this was received and edited, uh, March twenty fifth at four oh five PM by the town clerk. Um, the, this agenda is subject to revisions and additions up until meeting time. The listings, uh, of matters are those reasonably submitted by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion, to the extent permitted by law. So if we could just please stand for the presence of the meeting.
To the flag of the United States of America, to your republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, to confirm, our next meeting date for our next regular meeting would be Tuesday, April twenty third, two thousand and twenty four. That works for everybody? Uh, the applicant that's here tonight, um, if there's anything, if your case needs to be continued to that meeting date, would that date work for you? I'm not sure whoever you're speaking to, but.
April twenty third.
Oh, okay. John, does that work for you too? Do you have to, do you have to unmute him?
I think it's him.
I haven't heard it yet, but I mean. Usually he's pretty good about being, uh. Okay, well, we'll continue anyway. I mean, we have, we have enough members here that it would be fine, so. Um, that being said, I do need three voting members to start for the next case. Uh, John, uh, one more chance, if you can hear us, we do need three voting members. If not, uh.
That, that take works for me, that's fine.
Okay, and while you're here, John, can I have three voting members for this, for this case that we're hearing?
Which ones, uh, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, the.
Which case?
Sorry, review discuss an act, um, Stonegate Landing? Okay, uh, so for the next, for the Stonegate Landing LLC, uh, West Lees side of Somerset Ave, Somerset Ave, map nine, uh, Greg cannot be a voting member on that case, he will public of interests.
Um, let's put myself, yourself, Susan.
Okay, so we are here for a status upside, status update of phase one of Stonegate Landing. Uh, the applicant here tonight, wants to speak on that one?
It looks like Richard's on right now.
Is that not yet?
Mr. Chairman, I, uh, I did, uh, do the walkthrough last, the other day.
That's right, so just for, uh, uh, point and order, uh, Greg is our contact person for that, uh, for this, for these matters. So although he may or may not be a voting member on certain items for this case, he is a contact person that the outside in the public talk to and.
Yeah.
With, with, with his finding face in these conversations, so.
And, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know all the addresses, um, but this particular one that has all the photos, Elisa Parkett, I believe, she's out there in the back corner.
Yep.
We did see the concerns that she has in the property with the swell in the backyard. Engineer, I picked up a few things on there. Looks like, um, and he's going to put his report in play, um, that that particular area, there's a swell between the two homes, and it's been flooding out and going into both yards across the back. It's right on the backside of, um, uh, the orchards, uh, as, and right behind, as you can see, we have standing water in this particular thing. The engineer did notice is there was a second piece of the driver that was added behind this tree here on, on your second picture. He thinks we can do something with a swell down the side of the two properties, making the water dissipate out towards the street, because there is a well directly out in front of our house on the road. So that photo there, Zach, um, there's our house here, there is a porch here, and then there's a driveway, then there was a second driveway added to it.
Okay.
Kinda like in the swell before.
Yep.
So it's kinda stopping any kinda standing water from protruding out to the street. But he's gonna do his full report on it. Uh, we also walked out in the back where there was a D-ten pond on the very back of the park property, not this particular piece. Um, it was supposed to be a D-ten pond, it was never maintained, it goes out and actually to a live stream. Um, they've built a, uh, swing set onto the top of where the D-ten pond was supposed to go. It doesn't seem to be doing any damage, because it was never actually functioning.
Okay.
Um, so that's another section of the property. Uh, the engineer did point out a few of those things. They did a bunch of core tests on the asphalt to see how the binder was going to look. Um, and, uh, those reports should be coming back to us for the next meeting, I would take it. Um, like I said, I don't wanna speak on behalf of why this is holding water, but I think we figured out something that we can do, something to allow the water that you see in these photos dissipate back out to the street, because with their driveway was, we'll call it twelve feet wide, they pu, they did another driveway on the side for like a secondary cotter park on the side.
Yep.
So, and that's actually like in a swell section. So the engineer is coming up with a plan to dissipate the water behind these homes to get out to the street along the side of the two, that new driveway.
Is there confidence that this will, that it can be done?
Um, it's all gonna be up to the, uh, two owners.
Okay.
Of the property, I would take it at that point. Um, 'cause, uh, the driveway, the secondary driveway is, has, I think he measured a berm of almost four inches from grade.
So because it has to do with, uh, the, potentially has to do with the creation of that second driveway, that's, that would not be on the developer, correct?
Well, it wouldn't be on the applicant, but he's gonna come up with an idea. He's right out in the front of this house on the street, there is a well to grab water.
Oh, okay.
To grab the water. However, um, it's not able to make it to the street, and we've had astronomical amount of rain in the last few months.
Yeah, no kidding.
Crazy amounts. Everywhere's flooded, everybody's has still properties getting flooded.
Pretty bad.
In this particular case, I, I can understand the hardship, it's going behind our house, going all the way around on the back.
I'm not, I'm not saying it's not a problem, I just didn't realize.
The house that you see the deck on, he has a walk down basement with, um, timbers, and I'm surprised at this point in time, he might, uh, might have had water in his home that, well, it might, I'm sure the sub pumps are working.
Okay.
Um, you can see in one of the photos, there's over four inches of water sitting in the back.
I did see that.
And, uh, it's definitely a situation, but I think we've come up with an idea, well, not us, the engineers.
Yep.
Are coming up with an idea to took, to help the issue, figure it out. We might end up losing one of those trees that are doing the buffer out towards the street. Um, there's like some, uh, soft pine trees. Uh, we might end up losing one if it's okay with the two applicants. I mean, I feel, and I'm, again, I'm not the engineer, but everything that we looked at, and he walked out and he saw that, picked it right up, took pictures, he said, I think this is our situation. I think we can make this go away if we can do a swell down the sides, get the water dissipating from both properties. So at that point, I'm not, again, I'm not answering for the engineer, I'm just saying what I heard. Um, and there is gonna be more reviews going out there, um, with the engineer, and I told him, keep me in the loop, we'll go back out and see where we stand with that.
All righty. Sounds good. Anything else from your, from your walk you guys found? Or was it just, just focusing on that pretty much?
That was pretty much it at that point. Um, so we had three engineers on site. Um, two of them were doing core samples of the actual, um, uh, binder coat, some of the, uh, homes, driveways, uh, come right out into actually the cul-de-sacs of streets. Um, there's fences that are on, uh, where there actually should be road. Um, that's all gonna be brought up on the engineer design, because they do everything through GPS.
Right.
So at that point, everything will be designed. And again, the applicant is willing to do whatever it takes to fix it, is, at least that's what I was told. Um, he's in the process of, uh, absorbing everything that was stated that day.
Right.
Whether he was good with it or not, he was actually very pleasant about it, um, you know, but like I said, this is just the beginning, the preliminary meeting.
All right, sounds good. Any questions for the other applicants, other board members who, who weren't there? All right.
Could I, could you just, uh, Greg, do we know when the engineering report is gonna be fully available to be presented with everything that needs to be done?
It's gonna be multiple visits, Jonathan. Um, I, all I know is, is this was the preliminary, we went around with some of the major concerns, we knocked on her door, she would let us go out in the back, um, on that flooded section. I could see where, um, like I say, there was a lot, there's nowhere for the water to go, because, uh, the orchards is much higher, the water just runs from the orchards down into swell in her backyard, but it can't exit her backyard. So that particular case, I know he's gonna, that was something he was really trying to get a plan together, so they can at least understand, um, that's either gonna, either the driveway has to be re, re, repitched, redesigned, or they're gonna have to do a swell between two abutters. But as for the, as for the, um, engineering of the, uh, of the infrastructure, it's gonna be more than a couple, uh, visits. Um, so they did a few core samples, I believe they'll come back at that point, be able to tell Mr. Fedorov, um, uh, what they want to replace. Every single well cover was covered except for the ones for the drainage with the, with the binder coat. There was nothing exposed, it was fully covered right over, we picked all up on that. Um, like I said, there's a lot of little things, but at the end of the day, um, once the infrastructure, I think, is pitched correctly, all the, all the wells are done correctly, um, the driveways are cut back into their yards with the drainage, with the design that's, uh, done on the GPS. Uh, I think we can get that, uh, infrastructure to do the proper drainage, um, on that place over there. Obviously, we did, like I said, found that drainage pit that wasn't even active. There's actually someone's swing set sitting on it, it's just a flat piece of property, doesn't flood, went into the woods a little bit. There it is, it's filling up with stream going out through the back of the property. Um, so there's quite a few things that need to be addressed at this point. I believe he said he was gonna get us all set up and maybe be able to get another site visit before our next mid, meeting.
The only, the only reason I was asking that question was because it sounds like, you know, obviously there are several components, several visits that need to be made and so forth, but it would be nice if we could get from the engineering company an idea of a time, an ultimate timeline, and a potential ultimate cost estimate for the process, not only for us, but for Federoff, because I believe as well with that Federoff was supposed to be, uh, posting more money for the bond. And it would be important, I think, for us to know where, where that stands as well, so that we, we're not approving anything here in a piecemeal basis.
Sure, but there's multiple applications that have to be done before he could actually give us a timeline. Um, so that being said, we could probably reach, uh, and maybe have, uh, um, secretary reach out, office personnel, whatever, whatever we wanna call ourselves today, um, reach out and see if it's possible, uh, they can give us some kinda idea, but I think it's kinda really, really early to be asking those questions.
Okay, just keeping it on the radar, that's all.
Absolutely, I agree.
Does Mr., do we know if he's done anything with the, uh, the dollars that we talked about for the bond yet?
To, uh, last meeting, I know we mentioned numbers, did you find, find anything yet for that?
For the bond? No, I don't thi, I don't think we're quite there yet. I think we gotta.
We need to know what we need first. Um, I don't think, uh, has there been something with his building permits for the last few houses as being?
I think that.
Not sure if they were stopped.
I don't think so.
So he still can sell those?
I can double check.
Like I said, my biggest concern with that piece of property is phase one or phase two, or they call it A and B section, depending on how old you look at the drawing, um, is doing the infrastructure in phase A and completing it, and then allowing phase B to come in with the heavy equipment and all that stuff on that, on the cemetery end of that project. If phase B or A is to be done, I do believe we should hold the bond for the road infrastructure, because if it's gonna be finalized, it is gonna be damaged. That's something we can go over when we get to that point.
Okay.
Okay, all right. In that case, we can, uh, move on. I assume the bulk of the people here tonight are here for the Horton Street variance?
Well, there is, there is, is there people here?
Who, uh, yeah, was there anybody who wanted to speak on, on the, for the public?
Stonegate?
On what we're just talking about?
Just maybe, but I'm, I'm good.
You're all set, okay.
So you think we, we're on to something, we can make something work for that.
Okay, thank you. Um, I wanna send you my number too, in case you need to get in touch with me.
Sure, that'd be great.
Well, send it.
Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I wanna bring up something about the next one, uh, public hearing for Horton Street.
Okay, well, I, I actually was gonna ta, ask for a motion to take the items out of order, to do that one first anyway, so.
I just wanna say this, though. I don't know the man, but he was gonna buy some land off of us prior, and I don't know him, but I just wanna make sure everybody knows that. I have had, uh, talked with Frank on regards to when he was looking at a piece of my property. I don't feel it's anything that, any concern, I just want everybody to know.
Okay, I mean, I guess we could avoid having you be a voting member on it, I guess it would be best. Do you have a conflict of interest too?
I live, uh, very close to this property.
Okay, so it probably would be.
I'm not in the butter, but I'm close.
If you were, if you were direct to butter, you couldn't be, but if they even, if you get a butter, it probably would be.
I just, for the best.
That's it, best you can, correct, okay. Okay, so, um, we could just keep this, we didn't use the same, we didn't use the previous three voting members, which were Greg, myself, and Susan. The three of us don't have conflicts on this case, so we can keep those three voting members. That sound, that works everybody? That, that way we have, we can avoid any kinda potential conflict of interest. So I'll make a motion that we, oh, entertain a motion to take the, uh, agenda item five I and move it up to be the next item agenda, the, uh, Frank Luongo zero Horton Street, uh, map, zero, map ten, lot twenty nine variance application.
So moved.
Okay, discussion? Is, uh, sorry, is there a second? So we got the ayes after carried. We need, I, I will call, hold for Zoom.
Aye, David Phillips.
Aye, Lisa Simpson.
Aye, Greg Logan.
Aye, Susan Pritchard.
Okay, so, and we'll keep.
I'm Jonathan Gale.
So we'll keep the same three voting members, uh, the applicant, whenever you're ready, if you wanna step forward to present your case.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Attorney Robert Frederick, my office is in Dyton, Massachusetts, and I'm representing Mr. Frank Luongo, who's the petitioner in this case. The owner of the property is Donald Backland, he's also present today. Um, first, counsel Mitchell. That is a heck of a background. I can only hope you're on va, on vacation someplace and still working.
No.
So what, what we have is, well, first, let me start with some introductions, first of all. With me tonight in the back row is Frank Luongo, his wife Annie, his daughter Christina, his daughter Gabrielle, so, and then their husbands, okay? Seated next to them is, is Don Backland, who's Farrell Backland Insurance, and also a long time resident in Dyton before he fled to Little Compton.
And Florida.
So the, the background of this is that Mr. Backland actually owns two parcels of land, and I wanna go through just the, the two, because I actually misdescribed the relief that we're looking for. The, there's map ten, lot twenty nine, which is eleven point three acres. That is what's referenced in my petition, that is the, the lot for which we're seeking the relief. There is, on the plan that we submitted, map ten, lot twenty eight. This is a four point seven acre, uh, parcel, that is also under the control of Mr. Backland. It is subject of the same deal, in other words, Mr. Backland and Mr. Luongo have reached an agreement to sell the parcels for the, the building of three houses, okay? So I just wanna be real clear, what we're actually looking for is just the division of map ten, lot twenty nine into two parcels. This is a simple frontage variance request. Uh, lot twenty nine has a hundred and sixty nine feet of frontage currently. Uh, the plan describes basically a more or less even break between the two if it was allowed. Uh, I would point out that lot twenty eight has two hundred fo, feet of frontage, so if you combine the two, what you have is three hundred and sixty nine feet of linear feet frontage, where if, in fact, there was water service there, there'd be five hundred and twenty five required. So I'm just trying to, to kinda get you guys situated with what we're looking. Um, as I said, this is, this is a little bit of a different situation. Uh, Mr. Backland had, has had the opportunity to sell the property in the past. Uh, oftentimes, as an attorney, licensed real estate broker, I'm asked for opinion of value. It goes to the highest and best use of what you could do with the real estate. I, I think it's fair to say in this case, Mr. Backland does not wish to do that. Um, what he, as someone who's lived at Cedarwood Circle, which is right there, um, and somebody who's lived in that neighborhood for a very long time, he doesn't wanna see the nature or the integrity of the neighborhood destroyed, so he was looking for the right purchaser of the property. Mr. Luongo and his two daughters, what they wish to do is build three single families homes for them, so they would be residing it, one for Fr, Frank and his wife, and one each for his daughters. Uh, there is, uh, just one thing I'll cover, which is there's a water moratorium in place. Um, I spent some time today speaking with Mr. Clunin about that, so obviously that creates a little, a little, a circumstance that otherwise wouldn't be applicable. If the water moratorium was not in effect, it would be a hundred and seventy five feet. Unfortunately, it is in effect, so that obviously changes the figures. I would suggest to you, that's to the hardship of the petitioner in this case, they certainly didn't create the circumstances that we, uh, caused the moratorium. Um, further, I know he did provide comment, 'cause he and I were speaking to this, uh, we're fine with doing what we need to do for the purposes of the well, and then understanding that if we chose to connect to water in the future, if the moratorium was lifted, that that would be upon us as applicants to then go to their board. So we've already covered that with them, and we understand the mechanical pieces, that we'd go forward with that. Um, and again, so where we are now is, Mr. Backland was actually approached by a developer to look at combining the parcels. If you combine the parcels, you get nearly sixteen acres, you've got plenty of street frontage, and there was a plan actually produced to him to try to build fifteen houses. That would represent the best and highest value of the real estate. But again, Mr. Backland didn't wanna do that, he doesn't think that fits with the neighborhood, its character and its nature. So what he did was, he basically looked at that and said, that's not really what I wanna do, and at this point in time, he's contracted with Frank Luongo. The first interactions I had with Mr. Luongo went along the lines of, if we're gonna do this, we have to make sure that it is in the best interest of the people in the neighborhood. So what we did was, we actually held a meeting with the abutters. Um, I actually was unable to attend. Mr. Backland was there, Frank was there. They basically brought the people in and said, this is what we're trying to do. We don't wanna change the nature of your, your neighborhood, we don't wanna create more traffic or anything like that. There's been other options out there, we're not, you know, I, I think Mr. Backland will tell you right now, he's not interested in pursuing that, but this represents something that's more in cons, you know, in line with, I think, Mr. Backland's values for having been out there, as well as I think with what the abutters would experience the least impact for, 'cause you're just talking again, three residential houses. So I, I was not there, I know we've got people here, I'll allow them to speak for themselves. I'm sorry. Mr. Gale, was that, was that a comment? Okay. Um, but the, the bottom line is, we felt as though we were in concert with the abutters' wishes. We felt that, that given the, the situation of the property, what it could be and what we're trying to do with it, that this was really, truly trying to find a situation where there was no detriment to the public good, and there was no derogation of your interests in enforcing your own bylaws. I would go further and suggest to you that if you did in fact enforce strictly your bylaws, what you would do is end up unduly harming in, in causing problems for the folks who do live up there, because again, the, the the oth, opposite approach would be to say, well, you don't have the footage, and now you have to pop a road in, and now all these extra houses get built. So I don't believe that's the, the town's best interest, I certainly don't believe it's in the abutters' best interest, and of course, my client just wants to do the three houses. And even if you look at the plan, the setback significantly off the road, you know, we, we've done all that we could to try to minimize any impact as far as what would happen for the neighbors in, in that, uh, the neighborhood. So with that, I'd certainly open it up to any questions anybody would have.
Uh, before I do that, I just do wanna read you three pieces of correspondence that we have that have come in from the town boards. Uh, I'll do this in order in which we receive them. It looks like we have one, uh, from the fire chief, uh, saying, uh, it's on Thursday, February twenty ninth, "I have no issues with this proposal, however, I would just like to remind all parties involved that any driveway in excess of a hundred fifty feet need to meet the National Fire Protection Association standards." Respectfully, Chief McGee. That's all that he's, his comments were for that. Uh, Diane Curtis, uh, the office manager for the sewer department, her, uh, comment was just quote unquote, "There is no public sewer in this area." And the one that we received today, this is not in our meeting packets, because we just got this literally three hours before the meeting, so Carrie did not have a chance to put it into our packet, uh, but it will be updated online eventually, but I'll read it to you in the minutes for now. Uh, this is from Tita Braga, the clerk and treasurer of the water department, a water district, uh, sent this afternoon, Tuesday, March twenty sixth, at three sixteen PM. "Good afternoon, Carrie. Chairman of the Dyton Water District, Jeff Clunin, asks that I reach out to you to, uh, in response to zero Horton Street variance application. Jeff has reviewed the variance application for Horton Street, and there is currently no water mo, uh, moratorium. To connect in the future, applicant would need to need, would need to appear before the Dyton Water District Board of Commissioners. Otherwise, we have no objection to the application." Thank you, Tita. And I, I'm sorry, if I might mess, there is no water mo, moratorium, she said there currently is a water, uh, currently is a water mo, moratorium, sorry.
I'll listen to that next, but I waited.
A little, or coming a cold, so I.
That's okay.
A little stuffed up, so. Okay, so, that being said, I'll go to the three voting members first. Do you guys have any questions for the applicant?
Who's the three voting members?
Uh, we have myself, uh, John, uh, John Gale, and Susan.
Susan.
Susan, do you have any questions?
I don't have right now, but I'd like to be able to come back.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. John, do you have anything?
I think the first thing I'd like to know is, um, you indicated that the three residence that would be built would be for the individuals there. Are they willing to stipulate at all that the homes will not be sub rented or sublet or rented out?
Yeah, they're all nodding in, in agreement in that, Mr. Gale.
Good. I'm probably have others, that's my first question for now, thank you.
Any other board members have any questions that aren't voting members? Craig, Gary?
Well, like I say, um, obviously we know the water moratorium is the issue with one of, some of this property. Um, we're supposed to have six hundred because of, without a water, it's two hundred. I think I, I kinda agree with the hardship is on the town, not on the applicant.
Yeah, definitely.
Um, so I kinda feel for that, dropping it down to the one seventy five, and then, I'm sorry, how much frontage did you have on all three?
Three sixty nine. So we're still admittedly short of the five twenty five at that.
Well, one of them's rather large.
Yes, one of them's, yes.
Is there any objection to taking some of that to make it, make these more equal? Or I, I'm just asking.
What he's asking is, would you be willing to shift the property lines to make the frontage more equitably adjusted?
We have, I, I don't think it's a huge deal, but, um, if we ha, if you have three hundred and sixty nine, you said, and we made them all equal.
Yeah, one's, one, it'd be tw, uh, two eighty, and one's two sixty nine.
And it would be roughly a hundred and twenty feet at that point for each?
Yeah, and then where.
Being the more equal, what you're saying, Greg?
Well, I, I'm not, I'm not saying it has to. I was just trying to look at this, because if we leave this two hundred feet, um, we only need one seventy five, that gives them an easement if, for future, not saying this person would do it down the road, they sell, they move on, or they pass away.
I, I.
They could still put another house there if they had to. If we lock it up at the one seventy five, or we make a condition on that property that they only can have a single dwelling on that piece of property, you know, I mean, I'm not trying to cost, cost the applicant any more money, I'm just looking at the frontage for potential use in the future. Um, you know, they could put another house in that piece of property with the two hundred feet of frontage, they got more than enough acreage on that parcel. I'm not opposed to it at all, I think it looks great. Uh, it just, the two smaller entryways are kinda small to the front of the, if you look at the topography of the remaining houses.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Um, but I, I'm really interested in what the abutters have to say about what they're looking for behind, uh, along the property line, uh, if, especially on lot two, I think it would be. Um, I think that would be the most detrimental to the, uh, neighborhood, what the kinda.
Oh, it's because behind.
Yeah, it's, you know, pulling down with headlights into the back of the parcel, it looks like Baptiste owns. Um, then. Then Mr. Backland still owns that other parcel that's theirs. I think that looks like a thirty-five-hundred square foot lot there still now. And that would be another, that's that's a perfect sized house for a house lot. So other than that, I think everything looks fine on my end. I did hear from, like you said, the fire department did make his good questions and concerns. Obviously, I believe that would have to be done regardless. But Jim, making making sure that takes taking care of it.
For the building permit?
Sure, yeah. And at this, I think I, that's all I have right now.
Okay. Elise and Dave, do you have any questions?
Uh, no.
Okay. Okay, so if any abutters want to come up and speak or have any questions, they can. They do have to state their name and address for the record. If they don't want to speak, that's that's fine. Here's here's information, that's fine, too.
Joseph Baker, twenty-seven thirty Horton Street, North Dayton. Chairman, some of the folks here may disagree with my opening statement, but as a veteran, I'd be remiss if I didn't say this. You call us forum to order, you had us face the flag, and unlike your colleague, you didn't remove your hat for the Pledge of Allegiance, and that kind of just.
Thank you, you're absolutely right.
Make that known to you, okay? Because I don't miss stuff like that.
I did remove the hat, oh, thank you.
Okay. Going forward, first and foremost, I want to make it known to the Luongo family that I don't know, to my knowledge, I don't know any of them. I've had no interaction with them in my past, and I certainly have nothing against them and their desire to want to build a house. I have nothing against that. However, I do have a number of issues. I've spoken to a number of the the abutters here, many of whom I know, and I have some issues to bring forward to this board tonight. First and foremost, I'd be interested in obtaining a list of the abutters who were notified in regards to this. Back in nineteen ninety-nine, I myself came before this board to seek a zoning variance because I lacked sufficient frontage, okay? So I am intimately familiar with the process, because, you ready for this, Luongo folks? I came back here five times over five months and kept getting told, "Well, now you have to go back and get permission from the fire chief. Well, now you have to go back and show us where your house is going to be," all things that weren't told to me the first time. So after five times coming before this board, I got pretty good at understanding what the requirements are. That being said, I'm bothered a little bit tonight because I actually called a former colleague, very close friend of mine, who lives four houses down from me on the same side of the street, and he was like, "What meeting? What are you talking about?" And I find that suspect, and I find that bothersome that, I'll say his name in this forum, Dave Reese, who Mr. Backland knows who Dave Reese is, and Dave Reese owns about an acre more than I do, and he was not notified about this meeting. So now I'm curious to know who else on the street wasn't notified when my neighbors across the street were notified, who don't abut the land, and Mr. Reese certainly.
It all goes out certified now, every single one for three hundred and fifty feet of this property.
Right, and Dave was certainly within three hundred and fifty feet.
What I'm saying is, it did go out certified. Am I correct on that? Three hundred feet.
Three hundred feet. So that's that's my first, on the way here, I couldn't, I found it interesting that he wasn't.
Because we made sure it went certified now because we were having that issue last time.
Yeah, I had to pay a bill as well to.
So what what I did was, I went to the, I did my own for Mr. Luongo for the meeting, for the purposes of trying to ascertain who the abutters were, because there was a a little bit of a bobble, but it doesn't have to do with Mr. Reese. So once I had that, what we did then is went to the tax assessor's office, and we had them do a certified list, which was produced to the zoning board, and then we paid for the certified mailing to go to everybody on that that list. So that's that that was the process. Now as to the bobble, I did not pick up the fact that this actually bordered into Rehoboth.
That's correct, counsel.
So I didn't see that the first time through, so they were not invited to the abutters meeting. That was my fault. Only when I got into kind of looking at this did I recognize that that was happening as I went through the process of trying to file. I did go also to Rehoboth to get a certified abutters list from their side of things, and we did produce that as well to the board. So we tried to do everything we could as far as trying to get there.
I appreciate that, counsel. My concern is, Mr. Reese doesn't live in Rehoboth, and although he is just one person that I spoke to tonight, it certainly raises the question, who else that's not in attendance was perhaps not notified when I see another neighbor who lives across the street, but I don't see others who live on the same side of the street with this proposed property as is.
We have no interest in doing anything over like rolling over anybody. So if you feel like somebody else seems to be heard, we should certainly address that.
Well, that's that's what, I just want to make sure that, like I said, that the proper abutters within three hundred feet were all properly notified, because Mr. Reese apparently wasn't. So in any case, that's that's one issue.
May I, may I ask what Mr. Reese's address is?
Twenty-six sixty.
Think he's twenty-six sixty? Yeah, he's like.
That's just off the top of my head.
Four houses down from us, so.
And you're.
Twenty-seven thirty.
So I have the abutters right here.
Okay.
So he's next to the Pavo's.
Pavo's is would be right in front of this proposed area.
Really, how the way this is?
Okay.
This is the lot. It goes three hundred feet from the lot line.
Yeah, this is Dave Reese right here.
Dave Reese, twenty-seven oh-two.
Lot twenty-seven. If that, if that's not Reese, that's Pavo. And then Reese would be the next, because like my wife said, Pavo was in between him and the and the property, and he goes all the way back.
Well, that's going to make a huge difference, because if Mr. Reese is over here, he won't be notified.
No, he's not. Okay.
I I sold David Reese's lot.
Right.
And I sold my old house historically. I lived at twenty-six hundred, she and my wife and I built that first house there. I sold it to Dr. Jim and Kelly Boyd, who probably most of you are treated by, and then they eventually moved down and sold it to the Pavo's. So the Pavo's abut my lot, and Reese, David, I sold him the other.
Correct.
By acres, which is closer to the high school.
Right, right.
So this is Pavo.
So on that note, actually, and I'm sure Mr. Backland may or may not be aware of this, but I had an opportunity to buy that eleven acre lot, because that eleven acre lot was also adjoined to the five-point-six acres that I currently own, and it was owned by Henry Kleck, K-L-E-K. Okay, Henry Kleck wanted to sell me the entire seventeen acres. I reneged on that. After looking and walking and exploring that property, I bought what is essentially my land now, five-point-six acres, and I, you know, subsequently built a house after getting a zoning variance for the frontage and so on. But what I have, and I'm sorry, Mr. Backland, and I like you, I've known you for years, what I have a problem with, counsel, is that the maps that were sent out and that were produced at this meeting that you had at Segreganceit, I questioned the engineering, and I'd like to know who the engineering firm that was did that. More so, I would ask when the last person who was involved in that, and this is should be very concerning to the Luongos now, has walked out on that parcel. Because what I'd like to show the board tonight is a map that was produced by Mount Hope Engineering and certified to the signatures to present before this board back in nineteen ninety-nine that shows lot twenty-nine, Mr. Chairman. And you will see on the back of lot forty-nine, you see all the certified signatures here, that lot twenty-nine has significant wetlands.
Right there.
Okay, the maps that we show were shown subsequent to this meeting.
I just wanted to see what we got. It's showing kind of the same thing, sir, right there in the corner.
Maps that we were shown from the meeting did not, matter of fact, it said no what, no wetland designated on lot twenty-nine.
You see this where it says one hundred foot, no touch?
Yes.
And then, so it's within this area, but right here. I take it you're out here somewhere.
Where's twenty-nine?
So this is the the back corner of that same parcel that you're pointing out right now.
This is lot twenty-nine right here. This is his other parcel. And this was not designated on the map I saw. It's the map we saw online that was sent out by the town either.
But it shows it on this one. It does show it.
Okay, so why would I say that to the Luongos? Because when I was doing my engineering, and again, please understand, I'm not trying to be against you, I'm actually, believe it or not, I'm looking out for you here, because when I was putting my septic system in, I happened to be the excavator. Jim Hall from Mount Hope Engineering was doing the soil evaluation and the perk tests, and I tried to perk back there, and every time I dug a hole, it filled up with water rapidly. I've been out there three days ago, and the back of lot twenty-nine has wetlands all the way out to Mr. Stolo's land, which goes all the way back along the Rehoboth side from New Street. So like I said, when I saw the map produced online, and it didn't delineate any of these wetlands, as anyone with any engineering background knows, counsel, wetland doesn't go away. If anything, over time, it expands. Why would this be a concern to the to the Luongos? Because when you go to perk it, and it doesn't perk, or you do put in a septic system by by however you go about that, you're going to have an issue down the road, because that septic system, I guarantee you, is going to fail back there if you're within that that range of the wetlands.
If he's putting a septic system on that piece of property eleven feet higher than the lower part of the wetland.
So you're going to put a raised septic system?
Well, no, the topography of the land is higher where his proposed perk would be in conjunction to where the wetland is. The wetland is showing here.
Okay. Obviously, you're aware of the offset from that wetland.
At one hundred foot.
Okay.
So we got one, we got one fifty-five, and then we come out of the wetland, out of the one hundred foot, and right out of the one foot, that foot, it's the same elevation. Then it gradually goes uphill to where his proposed septic system is at one fifty-eight.
Okay.
So he will be a little higher than the water table.
I just want to, like I said, take it, I don't know you, but take it for what it's worth. As an excavator, I've seen people, contractors, put septic systems where they shouldn't be, and then three, four, five years later, I see lawsuits, because, and counsel, I'm sure you've probably seen similar situations where the septic systems fail, and I don't want them to be in that situation. When I was here twenty-some years ago, from my thing, there were people down the road, and they were arguing with me, saying that land goes up in the back. And I said, "I don't know where you are, but where I am, that land goes down in the back." I've been out there, I was out there three days ago, my son, and we had boots on because of how much standing water is out there. So I just want to make sure that, you know, the board understands that, and the Luongos understand that, and like I said, I was concerned. I have to stand here, counsel, and disagree with, and I'm again, dislike me, like me, or if you, but I speak what I what I what I believe. When counsel presents it, that Mr. Backland says, "Well, there's another guy who he could make a lot more money off by putting fifteen houses." No way, no way, I don't buy it, I'm sorry. You can disagree with me, there's no way you're going to put six houses in there, never mind ten or fifteen, not with the wetlands that I've seen back there. That type of a cul-de-sac development would not. So I don't see that that was even, you make it sound like, "Well, if you don't go for this three houses, there's a developer out there that wants to put fifteen." It ain't happening. You can say, but I'm I'm, I just, counsel, I have a right to express my opinion, and based on my experience in excavation and and land surveying, there's no way that that type of development, I saw that map, too, that you, I was not at that meeting, you weren't there either, apparently, but I did see it through my neighbors of that proposal for fifteen houses with a ring in the center as like a cul-de-sac, and I don't know where that came from.
That's just die bombing.
But there's no way that would, there's no way that would be able to be facilitated within that property. Gone. No problem. That was not closing the motion, that was killing it. Order.
So I have absolutely zero point zero knowledge of how the plan was done, nothing. I don't know if it's viable, I don't know if it's doable, I don't mean to represent that it is. All I'm here to say is that somebody who was interested in buying it from Mr. Backland, that's what he was trying to do. Now, could he get three, five, eight? I don't know, and I would not mean to ever state with any sort of engineering authority, because that's not my background.
Right.
It seems irrelevant, it's like a threat, like if you don't do this, we're going to do that, it's kind of, you keep repeating it over and over again.
Well, I mean, I'll defer to Mr. Back. I don't represent Mr. Backland unless I represent Mr. Luongo. But his, I think, I think, my my feeling here is that he doesn't want that. I mean, you're here, you can speak for yourself, but the bottom line is, I don't, I don't think if it's not this, then he's going to go that. He said no to that for the purpose that does not fit with the neighborhood that he lived in, because he lived there. And and, you know, I think that's really important to him, that he doesn't want to be one of those people on the way out the door. He says, "Well, good luck to you guys, I'm gone." That's not his intent. He has a business right down the street, he's still, you know, in Segreganceit and everything else, I see him constantly. He's a person who is of the community, and he does not wish for that to be something. He's not pursuing that. My only point is, it represents an unusual set of facts for me as an attorney, because I have to present to the board, why is it that their bylaws shouldn't be applicable to this parcel? So when I'm saying that, I'm not trying to threaten you, that's that's totally not my intention. What I'm trying to stress to the board is, if they strictly enforce the bylaws, pivoting to something like that doesn't make sense to the neighborhood. That's all I'm trying to say. And again, I don't want to put you in a spot, but I don't believe it's his intention to do anything like that. If it was, he wouldn't have to do a mess. So the bottom line is, whatever that is, that's, you know, I mean, I don't, I, it doesn't have an engineering reference on this. I don't, I don't know if he just went out and did it.
That's.
I have no idea.
I would like to meet that engineer, if an engineer signed that, because, you know.
I'm quite certain that when you go into, like, you know the situation, if you're going to try to buy a parcel of land, you're not going to bring your engineer and do a whole delineation of wetlands. It does, you're not going to be in it that far. So, I mean, at this this stage, I think what he was trying to do is just negotiate to try to get some advantage, to try to buy it. And as I say.
And I certainly, I certainly appreciate that, counsel. And and furthermore, you know, to expound on that, when I bought my land, and just bear with me on this, Mr. Kleck, who Mr. Backland was well familiar with, was probably in his late eighties at that point, and Mr. Kleck did not have the land surveyed or perked, and asked me as the potential buyer to do that. And if to talk about, in your legal profession, and certainly that's what we call backwards, but I did that, and I went forward because I wanted the parcel, but nonetheless, I gained a lot of experience through that. And again, I just want to say, I understand where the Luongos are coming from, because I sat in that chair in front of this forum twenty years, twenty-five years ago, and I didn't want the neighbors coming in saying, "We don't want him, we don't..." I assured them I'd be a good neighbor, I plowed all the driveways, that I can help in the in the neighborhood with my machine, I try to be neighborly. My point is, I'm not against the Luongos, I'm not, but trying to, like I said, sell the abutters this, it it came across, "Well, if you don't go for this, this is a..." And I'm like, looking at that going, I've been out there. I walk out there all the time, my bond abuts that, and I go out there, and I go fifty feet, a hundred feet behind my bond, and I'm up to almost knee-deep water right now, and I'm like, "There's no way." So, like I said, I just want them to understand, I didn't want people coming here objecting to me being able to build, I'm not trying to do that. They seem like, I don't know them, but they seem like nice people. That's not my thing. I want to make sure that, number one, all the proper abutters were notified, because I talked to one tonight that wasn't, and then, number two, that whoever did that engineering is not leaving off, because when I saw that online, what was it, two weeks ago, I spoke to my neighbors here, I can't pronounce their last name, I'm sorry, but Donner and and Carl that live across from me, and they showed me the map that was provided, the first thing I did was pull out my map. I'm very good about, my wife can tell, I hold all my records and everything else, and I pulled out my map from nineteen ninety-nine, and I'm looking at the wetlands, and I'm like, looking at the town map, looking at mine, and I'm saying, "Hmm, this is interesting," "Hmm, this is interesting, because I know that to be accurate, if anything, that's expounded over the last twenty-five years, and that was not delineated on the current map, and that's concerning." You know what I mean?
So, there is a, I mean, you've probably, just giving your history of the property, there's a separate process they would have to go into. They'd have, they cannot build into the boundary of the wetlands. So, that's a conservation commission.
That's conservation people, right.
So, that, and, and we're more than fine with compliance, whatever the setbacks have to be. Given the acreage that's there, and, you know, again, if you're trying to just put three houses on six, what must the sixteen acres of land, it's more than likely that I, I think we can find the envelope to place the house in a proper spot where it's not going to be in a wetland where we can put this septic system.
Okay. I, I, at this time, I have nothing further, counsel. Ma'am, I'm sorry.
So, I just looked at it, so the lot that's being represented, the one next to them is Murphy and Backland, and then the next one after that is Pavo.
Pavos, yeah.
So, after that would be Reese, and so he doesn't meet the three hundred feet threshold.
He does not meet the three hundred feet?
No.
He could still come, it's just not that he meets the three hundred.
Carl, you got a notice on this?
Yeah, I got a notice.
So, how would a neighbor across the street be notified? Because of the three hundred feet, because of the delineation?
The scope and breadth of the frontage of the lot, because it's bounded by that side by two hundred feet by the other lot owned by Mr. Backland.
I see, okay, that makes sense, counsel.
So, this is?
Yeah, Pavo, right there, twenty-seven oh two.
And then this would be Reese.
Reese right there, okay.
And then, I'm sorry.
He wanted, he asked me, he couldn't attend the meeting tonight, but he asked me to call him to explain this afterward.
KJ.
KJ.
Right, but what I'm asking is, where is he?
Where is?
On here, this one.
Okay, so where is Mahabharata?
It's probably him.
Um, no, he's further up next to me. So, this is me right here, they're over here.
See, and he got it, because he's within.
Because he's within.
Because if you see the delineation, he's got just a sliver.
Three hundred feet from the far southeast corner.
Right on the line, so that's why he would get it, but you can see here, Mr. Reese is here.
I'll explain that to him, that's why, because he was concerned, he's, you know, he called me a couple of months ago and said, he had some contact with the water department and said, "Did you, did you hear they're going to put ten houses between you and I?" And of course, everybody on our side of the street was, you know, as, you know, as you can imagine, concerned, saying, you know, there goes, you know what I mean? I haven't, I, I.
Was that an offensive water project? I don't know what the ten houses thing.
I'm sorry, counsel?
The ten houses, was that?
Yeah, because apparently, you know, the, one of the things that had to be cleared was the water department, as you mentioned, and I'm not up on all the water department legalities, but obviously, the water department has to be able to make sure that these people have access to tie-in, unless they're going to go to a well system.
Right, well, we'd have to go by well system.
It was from the water department that he became, he was, his dad owned Reese's garage here on one thirty-eight.
He was a client.
He was, okay, so.
So, I wouldn't take, that's why, when you said the name, I was like, if the name had come up, I would have called him, because I have that kind of relationship with him. That one, I ran your abutters list, and again, we tried to take the, like ordinarily, we can file our petition, we tried to take the extra step of having the meeting to make sure everybody was included. I didn't stretch it out, like, I mean, you could stretch it out to infinity, but I, I just took what they asked for abutters notices as for the invite list to that meeting, because I generated that. And that's, again, if I knew that Dave was on the other side, I would have called, I would have called.
I'll go call tonight and explain why he wasn't notified, because he was a little upset that.
He contacted my office, he knows me very well.
I will, okay. Anything further from the board?
Nope. Is there another, our resident wants to speak, or?
Counsel, I'm all.
Yes.
Okay.
I appreciate the time.
Thank you. Are you good with the man?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Anyone else wants to come up and speak, or any questions? I don't know how I would, I don't know if I'm necessarily set to make a decision on this tonight, just.
Well, like I said, um, the applicant came in front of us with a proposed piece of property, insufficient frontage for three parcels, more than enough acreage, okay? Like I say, the only concern, I, I'm okay with everything, because where I'm seeing of the topography, as long as this is correct, all the septic systems are much higher than the wetlands. So, it looks like the back of the property takes the swell, it's wetlands, that's a hurdle, like I said, they have to go through conservation with, that's really nothing to do with us. So, you're in front of us for a frontage issue, and that's pretty much what you're asking from us. So, um, the only concern, like I said, Zach, was this piece here, um, being two hundred feet.
Right.
All right, and it's still, I think it's forty feet for an easement, correct? And he's already short, so I really don't think it makes a difference.
Still looking, I did speak to my client, he was be more than fine if he wanted to put no further development of the property as a condition.
On that parcel, yeah, because I think that's, that's the more, I'm only one member, and I'm not a voting member, but that's the only concern I have. Other than that, I think this is, uh, not detrimental to the neighborhood. Uh, obviously, he's stressed his concerns with the wetlands. As you can see, the delineation with all the arches and the elevation numbers on there, where this is, is much higher. So, the septic system's way out of, he's not approaching.
Right.
He's outside the one hundred foot buffer zone. The driveway, obviously, fire department stresses concerns, uh, they're going to have to do wells, that's, that's another burden to the applicant as well, because the town can't supply them water right now, um, so.
And I guess for me, as a voting member, my only other concern was what the abutters had to say, and if, are there any other concerns or questions that you guys have?
I have one more thing.
Sure.
Were you for or deny?
I'm sorry, sir?
Are you for or deny?
Just for the, for the, for the record.
I need it for the record, that's all, are you for it, or you want to deny it?
Ladies and gentlemen?
For, for, so.
Again, I, I sincere, I'm being as sincere as like, I know where they are, because I sat here myself, and the last thing I wanted was the people around me to say, "We don't want him, we don't want him to build," I don't want that, I'm not, I don't want to be objecting to them, so, in, 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 in full respect to the people and Mr. Backland, I just wanted to come here and make sure that it was done, being done properly, that the Luangos were familiar with the fact, are aware of the fact that the back of that lot was, is under water right now, and that they're aware of that, and once those concerns are expressed, I have no, no further objection.
So, he's for it.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, what's your name?
Josie.
So, I guess, as, as, as you feel, as though like, if something was going to happen, you prefer it would be this over something else possibly happening there, is what you're, what you're.
Mike, well, again, I'll say again, that, that, and this had nothing to do with counsel in this case, but that other developer that was proposing.
Right, whoever that was, yeah.
I'll go on record and say, there is no way, based on my experience and my knowledge of that land, there's no way that type of development would ever fit in there, it's just, it's not feasible.
Right.
It's not going to work, and I'll challenge any, any engineer that comes in that says it will. I'll go out there tomorrow with you and show you that that's not going to happen, no way.
Okay.
You know what I mean, unless you're putting the house in stilts.
Uh, John, do you have any questions?
Yeah, my question would be, going to what Greg said a little bit about the three hundred and sixty-nine feet total frontage, and breaking that up so that it was somewhat equal across the three parcels, which my math comes out to a hundred and twenty-three feet per. My question is, if that were to be done, does that affect access points without going up through any of the wetland area, if there's any towards the frontage at all, or does that impede the ability to create driveway access and so forth?
You go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, Jonathan, uh, the frontage doesn't have wetland, it's the back piece of the parcel, which is approximately a thousand feet from the road.
Yeah, that would have, that would have no effect on it.
Okay.
Sure, sure, absolutely.
I think Zach, you're, my, I said for me.
Greg, John, one second, the abutters are looking at, looking at the maps, one second.
So, this is the whole, this is the lot. Because this is what was posted on. You probably were looking at the.
She saw this, I got that.
It was like a cabinet?
This.
Yes.
That's the, that's what you saw.
Oh, okay, because what was on it was.
If you keep going down, you'll see, as you go down, it's all eight and a half, there's all, as you scroll, it's all eight and a half by eleven, and then when you get to this, it goes boom, so you'll see it.
Yeah, I think this was, this is what, also the wetlands are here. I think what we saw, maybe because the screen was just here, that's probably why, because it was so big.
Oh, right, right, oh, we, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't condition, I mean, I thought anything yet, but. Condition, condition, condition. Oh, oh, hold on, sorry. Just, if we have any questions, can we just make sure we present them at the, to the board? Any, any questions, can we just make sure we just hear for the, for the record, are there any questions being asked? Sorry.
Is this, is this the white breach?
So, what they're asking is on the plan, about Chris House.
Yep.
And that's the house that's.
Okay. In relation to her house, okay, that's fine.
Is any of these people here, any of these people here?
No, 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 one who lives here wants to know where the driveway was in relation to her house, she couldn't sell the plan at all.
Yeah, I was thinking headlights and the sky's young, that's what I was.
This house here just sold.
Right.
This one here is probably, is that? Chairman's asking, if any of these neighbors here are present.
No.
No.
Okay.
If there is, um, this one just sold.
They're talking this one here. So, this one's sold, this is what I was thinking, Zach, when they come down with the headlights.
Yeah.
They're not here. Okay, that's what we need to know.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so as the three voting members, do you feel like, uh, this is something that we can close the, as a reminder, would we close the public hearing on the case, that means we cannot ask any more questions, we cannot take any more information in?
Zach, my only concern is, in that respect, is that, um, if there are potentially other, other abutters who still need an opportunity to speak, because they couldn't make it this evening, then I would recommend that we continue this for one more meeting.
I think, girl, I think we resolved that, right, in terms of who, what, was it, wasn't it notified, or is there a question as to that still? I don't, the last I want to do is close the public hearing without.
If this house just sold, do they know about this meeting?
Who would, who would you, do we, do we like literally just sold, like?
Like, weeks ago.
Fourteen.
So, that would be under the old abutters, well.
Right, because if it was, if when this was sent out versus when the house was sold.
Two weeks.
Maybe Marguerite, while she's here, we can ask her on that. Marguerite, I'm not sure if you've been listening. I'm not sure if you've been listening, we have a question about, like, in terms of abutters, and a house got sold about two weeks ago, right around when this would have been mailed out, where do we state in terms of, like, how that, that abutter versus the new resident becomes contacted?
The abutters list needs to go out based on who's the owner of record at the time the list was created, but the reality is that you don't know if that owner of record shared this with the new owners. If it is of importance to the board that the, that all of the abutters who are going to be living there be notified, then certainly, you know, they haven't done anything wrong by not notifying them, but you could ask them to make that effort.
Right.
Uh, and it could also perhaps give you some time to confirm, um, the building envelope, and the septic system and well envelope, uh, since there seems to be a question about where the wetland behind is, and the distance from conservation, uh, subback requirements, for some sort of additional information that's to be presented.
Okay.
I also, I've been listening to this, and I'm, and I'm taking a quick look at the application, I'm still a little confused as to the hardship, or the hardship based on soil shape or topography of the property as it relates to frontage, even if we were at a hundred and seventy-five feet, I still don't understand where that argument is or has been presented to the board, so. I think it might be helpful information for the board to receive from the petitioner.
Okay.
Certainly, and that, that's why.
She can't see. Or hear you.
Just because she's out in a Tuscan village, she can't possibly see me.
Just sitting in my office at home, Rob.
We can all dream, though. So, that's, that, and I know that's upset the abutters, but that was one of the reasons why I keep coming back to what the proposal was for the use of the property. This is a very odd, misshaped kind of, of petition, Marguerite. It's not your classic, well, because of something, nature of the land, it's really because if you look at both parcels put together, and what the potential use could be, that the actual strict interpretation, or application, I should say, of the bylaws to the two lots, would I think potentially, and I, I'm not saying it would, I'm not, you know, again, potentially cause for a larger development. Whereas, the, the public good here, and the good that the board is, is trying to adhere to, which is to make sure that the character and nature of the neighborhood stays intact, it would be better for the abutters and the applicant to, to be granted this relief. So, the, it, the hardship in this is, I think, a hardship to the community and a hardship to the abutters if the bylaws themselves are enforced so strictly. And that is the reason why I've brought up that potential subdivision, is because I do think that creates a hardship on your schools, a hardship on all of your public utilities and services, and I think it's just unnecessary, particularly when the party's intent, and again, I'm, like, Mr. Backland, I don't mean to pin you in here, but I, the intent here is to keep the nature and character of the neighborhood, to just have the three-house lots and, and that be what it is. So, it, it's, it's, it's a kind of a tail wags the dog on this one, as opposed to just strictly of the topography or something like that. It's of the character and nature of the lots put together, because there's two of them side by side under concurrent ownership.
I mean, I hear that the argument you've made, just obviously in looking at the requirements for variance under the law, and the hardship has to be tied to the soil shape or topography of the lot.
Well, that, and that.
I think that there are some solutions that would allow for three new houses to be built with sufficient frontage. They may be more costly, I don't know how costly those are, because they haven't been presented to the board or explored, and I, I think there needs to be, the board is required by law to meet, uh, requirements that forty A establishes for granting of a variance. And, I mean, the debt, the fact that, I think you've made a very great presentation about, you know, that this, there's no substantial detriment to the public good, in fact, it may be beneficial to the public good, there's no, you know, derogation of the intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw, but those are only two of the three required elements for variance, as you know, and as the board knows, so.
Right, and I, but I think.
That's why I was trying to find out what specifically you were going to be addressing with regard to the soil, the shape.
Well, and, and I mean, there is, there is the, the water moratorium, but that doesn't get you back to the full, full frontage figure, right? And I understand that, and that's, that's the, the major element of the project itself. And again, I think the board's well within its discretion here to look at this and say that the public interest outweighs the strict application of the bylaws in granting the waiver.
Now, again, I'm just going to tell the board that the zoning law, as they know, for variance requires there to be a finding about three different elements, and I'm hearing two of those three elements being presented tonight, I have not heard the third element presented. But that's certainly something the board can explore, and perhaps if there is a desire to continue this a little bit more, that's something that can be.
Counsel, may I?
Sure.
Other address. Are you concerned, is your hangup about the lack of sufficient frontage because of the water moratorium?
No, because actually, the water, I, I actually agree with Attorney Fredericks that the water moratorium could be, um, an argument for hardship that would bring them from a two-hundred-foot requirement to a hundred and seventy-five-foot requirement. The problem is that they, the lot in question, which is really only Lot Twenty-Nine, does not have a hundred and twenty, seventy-five feet on its own, uh, so you're already taking an undersized lot, I believe. It's a hundred and sixty-nine feet, isn't that what you said, Rob?
Correct.
And then you're, so you're taking something that doesn't already, just even as a single lot, meet the frontage requirement, and subdividing that into two even more insufficiently.
Well, if I may, on that, on that point, going back twenty-five years, in defense of the Luangos, I came before this board, and the last thing I want them to do is think that I'm a hypocrite, I have fifty feet of frontage, but what I argued before this board, my land opens up to five and a half acres down the back, so I never had, per se, a front yard on the street, but I only have fifty feet of frontage, and I understood the requirements at the time. The water was, they, actually, water was non-existent on the street, it was put in subsequent to my clearing my lot. So, I understand, you know, if there isn't water on the street, what the requirements, and how's that, how that's changed now because water service is available. But my contention on their behalf would be with, what is Lot Twenty-Nine, eleven-some acres? So, if you split that in half, that's somewhat, uh, congruent and similar to what the five and a half acres that I have, and I only have fifty feet of frontage. So, I think my argument on their behalf would be, once you got down the back and it opened up, they have plenty of area to build a house, you're talking about a sufficient frontage, which would only be used for access to get to the back lot, does that make sense?
Again, like I said, that would be tied to the shape of the lot, so that would be something that the boards look at that meets one of the, the missing elements that I'm not hearing about, something related to the shape.
Then, then, if, if that serves the purpose, I mean, the shape of the lot allows for eleven acres, but with such a minimum amount of frontage, that's not likely to reoccur again and again, it's unique to this property and can create the hardship that you're looking for as far as the dimensions in, in the, uh, the structure of the lot itself. Because, again, the eleven, it just, that's why I keep coming back to, the, the lack of frontage for a lot this large allows for development in so many different ways, so therefore, that should create itself in the board the interest, and perhaps I'm, I'm standing on the, the strict application when, when you want me to pivot to the other, and that's fine. I, I think the, the argument kind of runs, runs the same way, which is, the nature of the lot itself, the, the dimensions are, really do cause a unique circumstance that this board should grant relief to.
Mr. Fredericks, I'm going to suggest, this is Jonathan, I'm going to suggest, um, in my recommendation, that this be continued. in my recommendation that this be continued and taken under advisement, that perhaps you and, uh, Marguerite could have conversations separate offline to see if you can find ways to make this amenable at this point, because I think there are several issues that have been raised, not just in terms of, you know, the, the, the footage for the frontage, but there's been questions raised, obviously, about septic and so forth as well. So there are several things to be considered and to be worked out, and I think, I'm hoping that if you and, and counsel are both able to have some conversation and put a package together that can be presented to us, again, is something that we could, we could consider. I don't know how you feel about that, but I'd like to.
I, I'd always meet Attorney Mitchell in her Tuscany Village. But yeah, I mean, I, I, I am fine with, I'm, I have an excellent relationship with Marguerite. She's very easy to work with. I'm fine corresponding with her. I think Mr. Gale, the, the, there's, if you see the plans, as far as the wetlands goes, the depth of the lot and where the building envelopes are, it's not in any way, shape or form in, uh, going to come into the, the, the border area from the wetlands. So I don't think that at, and I'm, again, I'm, I'm speaking as an attorney, not as an engineer, but where the proposed building envelopes are in the septic is not going to necessitate a filing with the Conservation Commission, because we're not going to be touching the buffer area. But that's, I, I, I don't know if that's been made clear. I know there's, I know there's wets in the back of the, the property. I, I appreciate the abutters letting us know. The petitioner is aware of that, but that doesn't really change the nature or character of their ability to comply with the building requirements or the conservation requirements. And, and as far as the other, I, I, again, I, I think that it's easy to get to the point where you look at the, the nature of the property and say, this presents a unique circumstance because it has so many acreage and such little frontage that to, for the purpose of the, the board, that that's the hardship, because otherwise, to deny the relief could create a bigger problem for the town or the abutters.
I think that I, you know, I did not, first of all, I did not live in Dyton twenty-four, twenty-five years ago. So when the gentleman spoke of having fifty foot of frontage, for example, I don't know. You know, several things have changed and regulations may have changed in twenty-five years. Um, and I, I'm not saying that's not a fair argument, but I think it's something that we have to consider as well. My, my first, my concern is that I hear what you're saying. Logically, it makes a lot of sense. I'm not disagreeing with it. But I want to be careful of, one of the things we try to be careful of, I think, very often, is to not necessarily automatically do something that changes precedent. And I want to be really clear that if we're doing this and if we're doing, that it's the right reason and we've, you know, we've dotted everything and crossed it to make sure that we're doing everything we can to make sure that we're providing remedies for our clients as well. So, um, again, I just, I don't want to do something that's going to set a precedent that automatically others can come in and make an assumption on, on what you're asking for as well. So I think we do need some time to think about it.
Uh, I, I mean, as, as voting member, I definitely feel the need to put it under advisement. Uh, I'm, I'm not going to suggest or encourage or entertain the idea of asking the two attorneys to speak off, you know, offline about this. That's up to, uh, up to be, up to the applicant to bear that expense and certainly up to us to bear that expense. So I'm not going to make that stipulation to any conditions that I would make, not conditions, reasons for putting it under advisement. My biggest thing would be the, uh, butters that we didn't potentially miss with the h- house sale.
With the house.
Marguerite was saying, you know, that, that's a big one. I don't want to miss that.
So what I can do is send out a notice to them telling them that this is going to be continued and they can appear. Would that be suffice?
Especially, especially to the one that, that had that lot that was just sold too.
Yeah.
Not to, not to those exceeding outside our usual parameters. I'm not saying we should contact them, but especially if there is someone within that parameter. If it's our, if it's our job to notify them and it's not our fault or their fault per se, but I don't want them to have missed that because of that reason and that come back. Definitely that would be a thing we'd have to overcome that we probably shouldn't have to deal with and we can avoid it now. Right, Marguerite? Was that what you suggest?
My suggestion would be that you ask the developer to reach out to the new homeowner.
Okay.
And provide them with a copy of the petition, because the abutters' opinions are important to you in this matter. I mean, it's not, people buy and sell property all the time. You have a butters list in every application. It's not your obligation as a board to be updating to new owners. In this particular case, it's of importance to the board. So I think coming up with a process where you ask the developer or the petitioner, sorry, to, um, to go out and seek or at least confirm that they've had some, some type of notification to the new owners uh, would be the appropriate course of action to take.
I personally would prefer that.
We'll, we'll undertake it. I, I, it's, it's easy enough for me to find the information at the registry deeds. Uh, I just mechanically, uh, counsel, we, we ordinarily do in these, when we file the petition, is the town sends the, the certificate, certified mail and we pay for it. We'd be glad to continue that process if you think that best, or I'll, I can send a directive, whichever you choose.
I don't know that there needs to be a certified mailing sent. I mean, it's not, you know, the certified mail process, the abutters' process was properly done. By, by the board, it was paid for by the petitioner. There's no, there was nothing incorrect done with that. In this case, because there's knowledge that there's a recently purchased home and it's unclear if that person was made aware of this proposal at the time of their sale or their closing. Uh, I think it's more one of those types of requests where the board could say to you, could you please just show us that you've contacted them? Whether you send us a copy of, you know, submit a copy of a letter, it doesn't, it's up to you whether you want to.
I'll do it first class and certified so that, that we can get something to submit.
However you want to do it, or if you want to go and talk to them, whatever it is.
Yeah, I'll, I'll undertake it and I'll send it first class and certified.
Okay.
I, I don't see any point in, in doing that and not doing what we've done for all the abutters.
That would make me feel the most comfortable knowing that at least they were contacted. If they, if the new, new, new owner chooses to not come, well then, that's that, but at least we gave them the fair chance to be heard. That's what I would want to maybe be, is a priority for me anyway. All right, so is there a motion on the floor to, um?
Yes, Steve.
I have one more.
Sure, go ahead, yep.
David Rosa, Lincoln Avenue. I would encourage the board to give favorable consideration to the initial request.
Thank you.
The initial re- request of what?
Approval.
The lots, to build their homes, they're Americans. They have a housing shortage. They want to live here and pay taxes and help us.
So the one question that I got.
Yep, sure.
Counsel, this might be more familiar than it is for the board.
Wait, are you looking for a job?
I might share it, thank you. One thing that I am concerned about, and this might seem selfish on my part, but I'm going to say it before, because this is a public forum tonight, is, and I have no, as I stated earlier, no objection, counsel, to, to your clients moving in next door. I have an outdoor wood burning furnace, and my concern all along, as soon as I was notified of this, was the last thing I'd, and again, I don't know if this is so much for, for this board, but it may be.
It may be.
Is I don't want people moving in next door in five years from now saying, hey, tell him to shut that thing down, you know, it's smoking over on our land, that type of thing. And I've had that for twenty years and I'm just, that's a concern of mine, because as you know, right now, times aren't easy and it saves me on oil, so I burn wood and it heats my whole house, and I'm concerned that.
We play no role in that.
You play no role in that.
No, no.
Counsel?
Nope.
I don't want anybody seeing, shut the thing down. Sir. All right. I know it's selfish to ask, but I have to. I want to make sure that I'm not going to get shut down. All right, we're in.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Me neither. All right, so I'll make the motion that we decide we take this under advisement to our next meeting, which would be April twenty-third, twenty-four. Uh, for me, for the sole purposes of, uh, making sure that the newly purchased residence who's in a butter gets, uh, confirmed that they've been contacted. Um, but as two voting members, I don't know if there's any, anything else that you were looking for for them or, or? That was it, just the butter? Okay. All right, so I'll make the mo, I'll make the motion for the continuance.
I'll second it. Susan Pritchard.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Jonathan, aye.
Zachary Carrick, aye.
Greg Logan, aye.
No, but I'm still saying.
Okay, all right. All right, so you guys are all set.
Can I still ask a question?
Yes, yeah, we have, we have enclosed what we have.
I, I flew up for the meeting and I know you've continued this and I can't promise that I will fly up for the next one.
Okay.
So I guess my question is, is there anything, you know, I, I bought some of this land before, you know, maybe a couple of people before, but, uh, you know, my first purchase was in nineteen seventy-eight.
Oh, before I was born.
I mean, is there anything you want to know from me?
I, I do have.
I'm sure with these, the fact that these.
That one, that one parcel that's still sitting there, there's a house on that parcel, correct? That's yours?
No, no, no. I sold the house.
Because it says Backman here.
That's what happened to James.
That's the house that we sold.
That's because that's produced before the sale.
I bought St. Clegg's house and, and the eleven acres, they were two, two separate transactions.
Okay, so you don't own that no more?
No.
Okay, I just was looking at that like for frontage reasons.
And they, you know, they attended the abutters.
No, that's all I need. I just didn't, that would have been something that would have been on my mind, that's all.
Um, so to his point as well, we can also offer Zoom. Want to come in through Zoom?
Yeah.
So I'll just need your email address, or I can send it to. Okay?
Thank you.
All right, thanks so much. We're moving on to our next item agenda, which is, I'll get a public a few minutes to just gather there along. I didn't want to, I wanted to interrupt like fifteen times to ask somebody, but if I wanted to ask somebody like fifteen times, they would have a tissue, but I didn't want to keep them stuck. If you don't mind. I feel fine. I mean, I, I, it's just.
I get sick, no.
No, go, I'm getting down.
Go into your house, that's it.
No, like I, I mentioned, I, I started, I started subbing.
Okay, so swear this, you have a piece of property here.
So it'll leave matter of time before something's done.
Two properties meet in the middle.
For Thursday, I felt. So I, I ended up calling out my table Friday.
So basically, you're getting deferred, you're what?
Into hers, or hers, into his.
Uh, mo- mostly out of the tree and all that. Swansea is like.
Usually, usually I have a.
Oh, I do, I feel great now. I see, I, I feel great now. I just. That's like an, oh yeah, I can't do that. We're just going to be continuing our meeting, so any conversations, if you can just continue. Thanks, thank you.
Do you, um?
Anybody else?
Not yet, not yet. I think Rob's got everybody. Thank you. Thank you.
Well, I did have a business. Yeah.
I did before.
I know you have.
Yeah.
You're busier than ever.
For the record, that was vice chair.
No.
For the record. All right, so we have findings and decision for the special apartment of one nine-two Cherry Street.
You already took this.
Map, map one, Lot fifty-seven. We have Marguerite here for this.
Yeah. Carrie, I did forward you a draft that was just right before this meeting. Uh, I forwarded you a decision, but electronically, I'll also put it in the mail tonight. I was able to speak to Attorney Gay. He did approve the draft that I had prepared for the board. Uh, so just so that the board knows, I have prepared a draft based on the, uh, decision made by the board for this property. The reason I wanted to talk to the board tonight had to do the email that you received from the building inspector. Um, I wasn't necessarily concerned with the front setback aspect of that email, but I was concerned with reading in that email that Cherry Street is not a public way. And I was wondering, once I looked at the plan, I wanted to know further about what, if any, impact that has on the zoning board's decision. I had an opportunity to speak to Attorney Gay, who's town council, a little bit more about this and do some research on it myself. From what I can tell, because the property, the house itself was constructed, the existing house that's there, I believe in nineteen oh-two or nineteen twenty. I don't remember the exact year. Uh, so well before subdivision control laws came into play in the town of Dyton, my sense is that Cherry Street has been in existence from that amount of time as well, because this house is always fronted on Cherry Street. So it's my sense, and I, I have to confirm this, of course, but my sense is that Cherry Street is a way that would be considered in existence prior to the zoning bylaw or the subdivision control laws coming into the town of Dyton. And assuming that that's true, then there is another step in the process, not before the zoning board, but before the planning board, that this petitioner will need to take in order to make sure that they have, uh, secure, like proper title and marketability for this property.
Okay.
And also in order to ensure that there isn't any sort of, uh, problem down the road with the property. And that would be a petition, there are some cases out there, but basically a petition to the planning board where they would ask the planning board to determine, and I don't know how Dyton's planning board does it. I know in Taunton, for instance, Attorney Gay said that he was familiar with Taunton. They called it a waiver of frontage application with the planning board. Uh, but, but essentially the planning board would have looked at the property and make a determination that Cherry Street was of sufficient width, grade and construction, um, elements to provide for the needs of vehicular traffic in relation to the proposed use of the land. So they would essentially just need to look and determine, you know, whatever the aspects of Cherry Street are, make sure that it's sufficiently up to par, you know, again, with regard to width, grade and adequate construction so that the necessary vehicles to service this property and this use of the land as a a property with a driveway and the use of the land as a single-family home are met. So that would typically, that's at least twenty feet wide. I think it's more than that. It needs to be able to be passable, um, that you can get emergency vehicles in there, um, delivery vehicles and obviously how, cars and houses. So I wanted to share this with the zoning board. It is nothing more that the zoning board needs to do, but it is something that I think, um, I will have follow-up conversations with the building inspector about. And, uh, Carrie, you might want to also share that as well. I believe before the building commissioner can, you know, issue a building permit on this property, that, that process before the planning board needs to play out. If I'm mistaken with regard to Cherry Streets, like when it was constructed, when it was created in existence, then my other assumption would be that somehow this property is part of an old subdivision, which approved Cherry Street as a way within that subdivision.
I think it was.
I mean, there had to have been something done to get this landlocked piece of land.
A long time ago.
Front on a public way to be a viable piece of property right now, so. If that's the case, there's also process through that, so.
Marguerite, that, Dyton had a village down on the water down there. We also had an amusement park that was taken out in the fifty-three hurricane. So back then, that, that whole little community was built in, in the forties, thirties, forties, somewhere in there, and those houses are all in there. I've done multiple work on a lot of homes in that area. Um, it is, it isn't, uh, it's not an accepted road, however, the town does maintain it.
Okay, so I mean, I think the finding by the planning board would be fairly easy, but it is a process that should be done in order to ensure the proper marketability and title of this property.
Okay.
So again, I drafted the zoning decision for the board. What the board did with regard to the application that was before it, I, I was supportive. I had no concerns from a legal standpoint, uh, that there were any other issues. Did have this question about a fronted, uh, Cherry Street, which is not apparently accepted as a public way. And the way to address that would be through a separate process to the thing. So the zoning board decision is still needed. I think that you should take a look at it. Uh, I can share my screen, or I don't know how, Carrie, you typically handle zoning decisions. I can share my screen, or I don't know how, Carrie, you typically handle zoning decisions. But, um, you don't actually have the written draft in front of you.
That's all, I typically, when you send me a, the email, I send it off to them for review. So, I'll do the same. As soon as I get in tomorrow morning, I'll forward it off to them.
My apologies for not getting to this soon. Like I said, I was waiting to confirm all of this with the building inspector and with Attorney Gay. Uh, I was also away the last, end of last week into the beginning of this week, so it just, the way it all worked out. But, um, I think that the zoning decision by the board, from a legal standpoint, seemed proper. I believe that the decision I've written captures all the issues and concerns and reasons that the board had, and I would encourage the board to sign that decision.
Okay.
Also, for somebody to, um, have a conversation with the petitioner to let them know that there should be another step before they, they issue into the building permit. And if the building inspector wants to follow up further with me, I'm happy to do that. Uh, there may be a letter coming from town council about this as well, because I know that when we spoke today, he was in the process of getting that out. Uh, and I don't know if he was sending that just to me or to the board.
Okay.
So, Carrie, if you want to reach out to the planning board to let them know-
Yep.
And the, the applicant.
Yep.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
And you need the cases and everything else, Carrie, I'm happy to share that.
Thank you.
You got my cover sheet?
No.
No, you don't.
No, I don't.
Grabs my pen.
All right, any correspondence tonight, Carrie, that we have not yet touched on?
No.
No. Did everyone read, over the meeting minutes for February 27th?
Yes.
Is there a motion on the floor to accept those meeting minutes for February 27th, 2024?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
A discussion? All in favor?
Aye, Greg Logan.
Roll call, vote.
All right, who's going first? Who's stopped on?
Aye, David Phillips.
Aye, Alix Spencer.
Aye, Zachary Karen.
Aye, Greg Logan.
Aye, Susan Pritchard.
Aye, Jonathan Gale.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, Alix.
Roll call, vote.
Aye, Alix Spencer.[1776.14]